Good evening, could you stand and rise for the pleasure of reading this?
Pleasure to be here in the United States of America. And your very right way of standing. One thing, another invisible ability, I don't think so.
Alright, good evening, we are, I apologize for the slight delay we're gonna have, but we're gonna start off with a executive, a quick executive session. Town council out in the back room, so I'll make that motion of entering into executive session for one MSR, MRS four oh six, six and E, consultation with the town's attorney. Second. I have a motion or a second, I mean session. Hearing done.
Aye.
Yep, aye. I also vote aye three zero, we'll be back with you all shortly, thank you for your understanding.
Hi.
Make sure you're.
I need motion Jeff seconded. All right, good evening. Thank you, everybody for coming. Sorry for the like we had some business we needed to take care of. Do a roll call. We have three councils present. So in keeping with our rules, any decision that has to be a majority vote, it will be all three. It has to be the majority of city council. So anything to be accepted will be a vote of three to none. All right, moving on. The approval of the ball we met at the public hearing of seven nine twenty four.
Motion to approve the meetings for the public hearing on seven nine twenty four.
Are there any corrections that anybody's we've done? Hearing none. Move vote. Listen.
Yes.
Jeff. Yes. A vote. Yes, also. Excuse me. Huh? Sorry. Second. My bad. Kind of rushing. I vote yes. Motion passes three zero. Moving on to the town meeting. It's from seven at nine twenty four. I just have one correction. Unfinished business. Excuse me, number two. Well, three quarters away. Counselor Castella is still incorrect. But that slide might roll closer to you. It's not hearing. There's an extra and counsel across those meetings here, everybody. That's all. The next one.
Thank you for that, Jeff. It was people spell my name with an O instead of an A. So an N was a new thing for me. Under unfinished business on number one, it says no action taken informational only. I'm just wondering if we should add like an agenda item it refers to for clarification. And that would have been the town hall project. And same on new business number two. It says it was voted five oh to table this item. I just think that maybe we should write table the amendment to agreement with Wright Pierce just for clarification purposes. I don't know if that's necessary or.
In the past, I haven't done that, but if you might be doing that, I can.
Okay. Okay. No, whatever is more clarifying for the people that read it is. I don't know you guys.
I don't. They don't look back and they would. That's not too much of a problem. Excellent. Excellent. So I don't know. Just do a scene and find a better place, but also on new business number two. It's the same console. On I one, at least you were consistent today. So your time to do. Who wants to make a motion?
I like the way that he gets that convenience for the regular town council meeting of July ninth, twenty twenty four as.
Second.
That is a motion in a second. Any further conversation? Hearing none. The vote will vote. Listen.
Yes.
Yeah. Yes. Vote yes also. Motion passes three zero. On to the treasurer's warrant. We have two to see. I will make a motion to sign the first treasurer's warrant dated seven eighteen two thousand fourteen. An amount of three hundred eighty eight thousand four hundred seventy eight dollars and ninety six cents.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Yes.
You put the date ten years prior to your motion. At twenty fourteen.
Good. Back this up. Okay. Treasurer's warrant dated seven eighteen twenty twenty four. A amount of three hundred eighty eight, four hundred seventy, three hundred eighty thousand, four hundred seventy eight dollars and ninety six cents.
Second.
Motion in the second. Take more compensation. Hearing none. To vote. Listen.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Vote yes also. Motion passes three zero.
Motion to sign the treasurer's warrant dated seven eighteen twenty twenty four for the amount of one million two hundred and four thousand six hundred and seventy four dollars and fifty three cents.
Second. We have a motion in a second. We have any conversation? She somewhere and there it is. This does include an eight hundred and three thousand two hundred and thirty four dollars school payment. Just wanted to see what they were paying. What was senior Stanford?
That is the quarterly dispatch contract.
Any more discussion? Hearing up. We go to vote. Yeah. Yes. Listen.
Yes.
Vote yes also. Motion passes three zero. You're on to reports of presentation. We have a presentation on the cost of the town hall project from Oak Point Associates.
All right, how's this? Testing. Got a good level? Testing. Good. All right. Well, thank you for having us again. My name is Tyler Barterman, architect with Oak Point.
Yeah, we'll return off of. Test, 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 test. Okay, there you go. Try that.
All right. So if anyone can't hear me, just give a yell and we'll do better. I'll try to not blow your eardrums out, but I'll find a happy, happy balance. So again, my name is Tyler Barmer, principal architect with Oak Point Associates, and we're excited here to be here tonight to talk about this first pass at the initial costs of the town hall project. Joined tonight with Peter McGovern, architect working on the project. All right. Okay, is this this one better?
That's perfect.
All right. So we wanted to give you a little bit of an idea on how the process works as we start to look at these overall project budgets. Whereas a multidisciplinary firm, we do all of our estimating in-house. And all of the people who have been involved since day one on the project from our firm, all the engineers, the architects, the interior designers have all been the ones that have been working on developing these project budgets. So it's really a comprehensive look at the condition of the building, the space changes that are required, making sure that we're addressing some of the deferred maintenance items, and then bringing systems and different parts of the building up to code. So all of these things are reflected. We take a lot of look at historic numbers. We're looking at our projects and competitors' projects are in the area. We're talking to subcontractors and material suppliers and really trying to dial in on all of these things that we know are volatile pieces of the construction industry and trying to give a best representation of the overall project budget. So we do that through a number of those ways that I just described. So as we've developed this budget, you'll see three columns in here is kind of a matrix on how we start to move through the decision-making process. The first column is what we've called the base construction. So these are the must haves. So bringing your building up to code, making things functional, addressing the systems and making sure that this building is left in a sustainable fashion. That's going to be a pride price piece. You're going to be, you know, excited about the projects and be functional. The next column is some of these additional things that would be great to do if the funds allow, knowing that we have to be, you know, kind of thoughtful at the current markets for for inflation, be respectful of the taxpayers and making sure that we're evaluating what these are and what those long-term paybacks are going to be. And then the other column, the last one on the right-hand side is that new construction line. So this one's a little bit more of a challenge where there isn't an identified site, but we have a really good understanding of what site development costs, utility infrastructure, and some of the other components that aren't necessarily the kind of the easy, you know, square footage of a building are. And using that number is kind of that litmus test. So does it still make sense to pursue a renovation versus what that new construction cost is? So each one of these columns is meant to be as accurate a representation for comparison purposes. We break our estimates down into three major sections. The first one being the construction cost. So you see that all in part A. And what that is, is everything that you're going to hire a general contractor to do. So the moving walls, the infrastructure, all the utility work, any of the things that you decide that are going to be overall construction parts of that project. Moving down, we keep administrative cost and reserves. And what this cover is anything that has to do with mobile equipment, furniture, things that aren't something that you would bid out to a general contractor, but are critical to making the building work. And this is also where we put contingencies as well. And there's two major ones that we really emphasize in this one, one being a big contingency. You know, as you're projecting out a year from now, we know that there's volatility in the market and we're trying to be respectful and build a contingency in there. So we carry about five percent for that. The other contingency is a big car, excuse me. The first one is a big contingency for all of those things. And then the second is the construction contingency, knowing it's an older building, but there are going to be things that we find as we start construction projects and we recommend around a 10% piece there. So all of those are included in that that section. The last one is administer fees and services, and this covers all of the architecture, the engineering, all of the permitting for both the town and state agencies that are going to be required, like the state farm marshal's office, places that we are required to to obtain permits for. It's going to have any of the survey costs and other things that are outside of that standard design contract. And all of those are reflected across the board in each one of the options. So you really can get a good sense on where individual cost centers lie as you start to look at the individual little pieces of the project. And with that, I'll turn it to Peter to talk a little bit about the details.
Thank you. Tyler sort of went to the first, the last page first. What we have on the screen right now in the three columns is just for the what's that? You can start right on page one there. Thank you. So these three columns are the, like Tyler said, the blue is the base construction, the must have, the green is the optional scope tabs, the sort of want to haves or and then the gray is adding those as a total. What Tyler was talking about, the three columns would be the last page of the packet, page five for the new construction. That's where we bring new construction into it. So this first line in the construction cost, I'm looking at A one, new construction. The one A is the base construction, which has basically the three items for the for what we, you would be left with a usable building. That's exterior repairs, replacing the windows and fixing the facade, the ADA compliance upgrades, and then there's a typo here, should be building renovation for that third one. And that is to make those concept plans that we're preventing to you a reality. And add all those together is about four point eight million dollars. Closer to four point nine. The optional items, one point one B through one point F are things we've broken out as possible items that might be beneficial to the building, but not necessarily to make it a usable town hall for you. And one point one B exterior envelope upgrades, that would be improving the exterior thermal barrier, adding more insulation to reduce your energy costs. One point one C would be developing the site out front to make it more usable and attracting people off the street. One point one D is rooftop PV. Putting solar up on the roof here. One point one E auditorium lighting. That would be this, the space here would be improving the lighting and the AV in this space. And then the last one, site lighting. And all those costs are in the green column there. You add them up altogether. You get seven hundred sixty three. Combine those two costs. If you wanted everything all in, we're for just the hard construction costs, you get that five point six number. We can go through the line item Bs now. For the administrative cost that Tyler touched on, so item two, land purchase and related costs, there are none because you own the land. Number three, movable equipment, furniture and technology. While we are going to be using a lot of the existing furniture, that is a big cost savings there. There, we're just figuring there will be some new furniture, especially probably down on the first floor. And in the conference rooms, there're going to be some new furniture. So we put a place. And, and the conference rooms, there're gonna be some new furniture. So we put a placeholder in there and for technology as well. None of the options have any of that. In there, so that's why it's zero. And so then the totals in that grid. Line four, advertising, legal and insurance. These are just, you go to the next page. We have newspaper advertising, printing and mailing, miscellaneous legal, the contract review. That's just basic fees to, you know, to get this product. Project advertising out on the street, roughly twenty-three thousand. And again, adding any of the options doesn't increase those fees. It's, you know, one ad. For X and one ad for the same price for X. We want X plus B. Uh, number five, utility connection fees. Um, this is again, all zeros across the board because you're dealing with an existing building, which is a very big cost saving. So you're not. Calling up central main power saying we need new line fed to the building. And then line six is where Tyler was talking about the contingencies fee. So you have a ten percent, um, construction contingency and a five percent. Bid contingency. And you will see because of the option. There's costs in those options. So that's why we have costs in line, um, six for the green for those options. So all the admin costs for the base bid would be about nine hundred thousand and then, um. And the options, a hundred and fourteen, hundred fifteen. So total administrative costs, just over a million. Uh, so section C, fees and services. Um, this is. The architecture engineering fees are based on a percentage of the construction costs. So that's why it's ten point two, um. A little higher than a new construction project because of the renovation. You're, you're dealing with existing buildings. They're sort of unknowns that you have to deal with. So that's why those costs are a little higher than a new build. So that's just a straight percentage of the number at the bottom of line A. To get those numbers, um. Some fees for modeling, rendering, applications, hydrant flow tests. And you'll see those added, um. This is line eight. Line nine, next page please. Um, some reimbursables, the, the cost of. Producing a project and getting your architects and your state marsh of fire, your permitting and all that. Um, that's line nine. That doesn't increase if there's any extra options. So that's why it's only in the, the base construction. For about twenty-two thousand. Site selection, um. Is zero because you have the site, you don't know it. Permitting and approvals. You are your own permitting and approval, the town. Um, management is, so you don't have any costs there. Surveying its soil, um, there's, it's limited as because. We will be even under, um. The base bid, even though you know the site, you do need some surveying for any new pads for equipment or things like that. So that's why that number's in there for about nine thousand. Construction testing, that's, um. Testing of all the systems that have been put in, twenty-five grand. Onto the next page. Project coordination. And I'll talk about fourteen and fifteen. So this is, um. And if you sort of didn't own the building, these would add some cost to it, but because you're all part of it. If you are. Tyler? For, for the fourth, line fourteen, project coordination, the owner's rep, moving coordinator, provider, reimbursables.
Typically on a larger project, we'd recommend an owner's representative because all of the people that are typically involved also have their full-time jobs. Where this one a little bit smaller, uh, proximity to our office, there's something that we wouldn't feel that would be a necessity for you. So. There's some good savings and it's the same thing with the clerk of the works where, you know, this would be a phased project, uh, one floor at a time. That having onsite representation for, for the design and, and owner's side is likely not a, an expense that you would need to incur. So those two things we've, we've left as zeros.
Thank you very much. Um, line sixteen, commissioning, that is the cost to, um, sort of make sure that all your. Systems are running up as designed, they're working together. Turn on a light switch, lights come on, AC is working fine. And then seventeen is just anything else. And right now we don't have anything for that. So add all the Cs up. And it's, uh, about six hundred thousand for the base, another eighty-five for the options. And if you. Were able to fu- fund the whole project, seven hundred and two. So a total project cost. Adding A, B and C would be six point four million, let's say for the base. Um, we'll just round up the options to one million, so it's nine hundred and sixty-three thousand. And again, if you were able to fund the whole thing, it'd be seven point three million dollars. So that's when you can take, go onto the last page, page five. And those are the same numbers that, um, correspond to our. Our, um, summary at the end here and how we can compare that to new construction. And I'm gonna let Tyler talk about the new construction. I'm gonna let Tyler talk about the new construction numbers and how we generated those.
For the new construction line, we've utilized a number of, uh. Uh, square footage costs based on the known program that we have for the building, uh, just over eleven thousand square feet. And, um, a combination of building costs and then allowance for, uh, site development costs. So these are things that without a, a, a site identified, there's some assumptions in here. We've made some assumptions that. Uh, sewer is gonna be nearby, that free phase power, water, those types of critical infrastructures are gonna be something that. Um, is included in, in readily available from the street. So with that, we've come up with about four hundred fifty dollars, uh, to four hundred seventy-five dollars on the building side. And then about a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty dollars on the site side for a total of six hundred dollars per square foot for the total building cost. With that, it gives you about a, just under seven million dollar expense on the construction side. And as you move through, further through. The lines, you'll see a few differences between them. On the contingency side, uh, with the new facility, we'd recommend a smaller construction contingency. So we back that down to five percent. Um, you start to incur a lot more things on, um, on different lines like movable equipment and furniture that's gonna go into spaces that. Uh, your current furniture likely isn't gonna be as, as compatible. Uh, you're gonna end up with a lot more, um, utility infrastructure fees as well. So you're gonna need to pay your water district and CMP and whoever the, uh. Internet provider is gonna be, all of those utility construction costs. So we've kept those in an administrative reserve line. Uh, as you move down, you'll see that the architecture and engineering fees are a little bit lower. The percentages, uh, typically run a little bit lower on those sides due to the complexities of, uh. The renovation, taking a little bit more effort on our side. Uh, and then you move down, there are a number of different things on the reimbursable side that start to increase. We're doing more. A lot more permitting work. You're looking at work with, um, Department of Environmental Protection. It might be a. A number of different permits that are gonna be required. So you'll see some differences as you move through that last section here. Um, not major differences, but there are additional work that's required throughout that process. So as you get through this section C, that's just, uh, right around under eight hundred thousand dollars for a total all-in on a new construction option of. Right around eight point eight million dollars. I would say, you know, the level of confidence on this one, you know, we feel good about this, but there are some wildly, um. Some things that could, could vary pretty, pretty, um, on each end of the spectrum based on. Uh, the location of the site, whether it needs offsite improvements, if you're, you know, generating a lot of traffic in a road that can't support it, you did your turn lanes or traffic signals there. Are some things that haven't been assumed that could drive that cost up. Um, versus a site that maybe has some of the utilities brought in that you might save a little bit, but that gets you, you know, a pretty good. Uh, picture of what a new facility would cost in the current construction market.
So the only thing I noticed missing from that is the land purchase and related costs.
Yeah.
You can't guess on what it is, you can't guess on where we're gonna put it.
Exactly.
We know with town hall land we have right now, there really aren't many suitable spots where we can put it. So that's gonna just, for the public, for me, that's gonna add to both of those figures no matter what. We're gonna have to buy a piece of land and develop it. Yeah, we can get whatever we get to this building. Still need to add those costs into the new.
Absolutely. And, and those are things that, that can really skew, um, an early estimate like that, not knowing the, the property, you know. You can have one large contiguous parking lot. It's gonna be, you know, really intensive stormwater, you're gonna be dealing with wetlands and a lot of other things that could. You know, could really impact the overall price, so.
We ran into that building, the police station. Ran into some unknowns in the land building the police station, so.
Yeah, yeah, there's the, uh, and, and you'll see we carry, you know, Geotech, there's the ever-popular either ledge or, uh, clay. We, it's like, we, we don't seem to hit anything in between on, on the kind of land that we're, we're seeing available for these types of projects now.
Thank you.
And what I wanted to say, um, as council members, you did receive a packet to. Had a breakdown for where we got those, um, construction costs. Right, you have in front of. So those are line items showing breakdown of each part of how we developed those hard construction costs for the renovation.
Excellent, thank you. Um, council, any questions off the top for Tyler or Peter at the moment?
Uh, just a quick question, and you may or may not have the answer to this. Um, if we did decide to go with the renovation. What would be the longevity of the building after renovating again? Are we looking at another fifty years? Are we looking at another twenty-five years? Are we looking at in fifteen years? We're gonna have to do this all over again.
I mean, it.
Best guess.
It's, it's gonna, yeah, it's gonna vary by system. So, so, you know, new mechanical systems are gonna be looking at twenty years. That's kind of the standard life, new versus a renovation. Um, your masonry facade's gonna be in great shape, windows will be in great shape. All of those things are gonna make your core building something that's gonna last fifty years. So, you know, we're, we're looking at kind of, you know, some great monumental construction here. There's, there's really good bones in this building. And doing some thoughtful improvements are gonna really extend that life and bring it back. Um. A lot of that will also go into, you know, putting together a really good, uh, long-term mani- maintenance and management plan. So, you know, you're gonna do a renovation and think, I don't have to worry about this for a few years. But I think, you know, early budgeting for some, from, you know, good maintenance, which you're, you're doing now. Um, to take care of the new systems that are gonna be in there will help en- enhance that longevity on the system side.
I don't, I don't have really anything. I appreciate the breakdown. I'm not a construction guru, so this is very helpful and the way that you guys broke it down. For me was, uh, very clear, so I appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for all the hard work that, uh, you and your associates have put into this. It's pretty good.
Thank you.
Thank you. For the, for the public, uh, going forward with this. Um, when he said he provided us a comprehensive list, he did. I think it goes down to the price of light bulbs. Just pretty good with what you have in this report right here with, um, how inclusive it is. So it's, it's not out yet, it will be. Um, we want to hold a public hearing on eight-six for the public, so we can get everybody in here to get their opinions on. Where we are right here, um, with renovating, and we can also put the. Uh, prices of new up to get our direction on where we wanna go for our, uh, August thirteenth meeting. So, we want to entertain a motion, anybody to set a date and time for public hearing, or I can do it if you would.
Motion to set a public hearing for town hall discussion on August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, that's six P M.
Second. Uh, we have a motion and a second, any?
Location, please.
Can I stand a little thing again?
No, just at the.
I do.
Terrible. Yes.
Motion to hold a public hearing on eight-six, twenty twenty-four in the town hall auditorium at six o'clock to discuss the town hall.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor of the public hearing, Melissa?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
Vote aye also, motion passes three zero. We will make sure the announcements go out and we will. Try to pack the auditorium. So anybody's here, make sure you tell your neighbors and your friends to come in so you can get the. Best feedback we can prior to going to the eight thirteen meeting. And again, thank you, gentlemen. Presentation was great and the work is fantastic. We appreciate it. Uh, moving on to unfinished business. Oops, sorry, jumped it. Uh, public comment, we have anybody in the public, in the audience present right now wishing to discuss something that's not on the agenda? Seeing no hands. Anybody online? Seeing none there also. Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Unfinished business number one, amendment to agreement with Wright Pierce. I would move that we tabled this item. Until the eight thirteen meeting. We will discuss it then when we have, uh, a full council.
Second.
Hearing a motion in a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to vote. Jeff?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
I vote aye also, motion passes three zero. Moving on to new business. Number one is the town council seat vacancy. Um, if anybody was present at the last meeting. Um, town, uh, councillor Seer has moved on to a new position, filling in as a town manager. And it falls on the town council to. Either hold on filling that seat or hold a special election to, um. Fill that seat prior to. Um, I'm. Content with holding it as November's coming up and I don't think the cost. And the hassle of a special election is worth it. So I will move that. We do not fill the town council seat and we wait until the next election, which is November fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any comment from? Any comment from the council?
Um, I was on board with holding this until, uh, November, but now there are some pickups that I'm starting to get concerned about, and that is one. Councilor attendance to meetings. Um, we're not having. Everybody here all the time, whether things come up and, you know, there, we also have our own lives where there's conflict of interests. Um, I'm also concerned if we have a four-man crew, what if we split the votes all the time, two to two? Like, how are we gonna get any business? I'm concerned we're gonna get less business time than, than more.
So I'm gonna go on past history of.
Please.
Ten years. I think I can count two votes where we split. And one of those was on, who was gonna be chair and vice chair. Um, I think that was about the only two splits we've had. That's, that's not a, a large concern of mine. I do see yours, um. Chair Cook got stuck in whatever that wasn't a. Virus, but shut down airfare and travel. She's stuck in Charlotte. Um. But, Madam Clerk, if we decided to go through with this. By the time we got notified and got ballots printed and got the special election done, we would be deep into September, early October?
Yes. Well, my opinion, if you were wanting to do a special election, it'd just, you'd be closer to November. There'd just be more time and money as you stated before.
And again, we're coming up on a presidential election that is unprecedented, so I'm sure you're gonna have more than enough to do there. Um. Understanding your fears, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to get out there, uh, so I can do what I told you so, if it happens.
We will do everything in our power not to have that happen, but I don't like to lose.
Fair enough.
Um, so.
Share. If it makes you feel any better, nomination papers are available on Monday. For all open seats.
So there are two, there will be. Two vacant seats or one?
There's one for the council, and then there's one for the school board.
And they are available in September, I mean, available as of Monday?
Yep, as of Monday, you can come pick them up at my office. Um, they will be due back no later than, um. September sixth, I believe, or the fifth. I just, I can double check. It's whatever the first Friday is in September.
Thank you. But that'll be on the town website, I'm sure.
Alright.
Thank you.
Well, Mr. Chair, you don't have to. Get your papers to run, you're gonna know in two years when we turn. Thank you, though.
And I, uh, my thing, as I was thinking the same, Melissa, as you, um. Uh, but it would be Jess's, there was, it would be electing Jess's seat in October and then they would be. Turned out and then they would have, so it's all kind of the same.
Yeah.
So. That's where my stance goes to.
Okay, so without hearing any further discussion, we'll go to vote. Melissa?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Oh yes, also, motion passes three zero. Alright, moving on. We have new business number two, Nature's Miracle LLC. So Nature's Miracle LLC at one sixty-one Gucker Road has completed a cannabis license application for a medical cannabis registered caregiver license. Uh, new cultivation on site and a medical. uh, new cultivation on site and a medical caregiver retail store. Uh, Nature's Miracle LLC applied date of cannabis license permit on July first, twenty twenty-four. They're considered new because this is the first time they're applying. Um, they have been in business for a while out there. Whether with grandfather or not, we've never come to a decision on that, but since they had a problem, it's now a new permit. Um, so we need to set a public hearing date for both the medical care cannabis registered caregiver and the medical caregiver retail store prior to us voting whether we can accept this or not. Uh, looking at our calendar with a meeting on our public hearing on the sixth, a meeting on the thirteenth, I would like to move this out to September third for a public hearing. Can't, we gotta have it sooner than that, don't we?
But they got, they're gonna be, should be on the next agenda. They're on a time crunch from the state.
What's the time crunch?
Next meeting.
No, what's their time crunch?
It's, I think they're on August first.
They're up. I, I don't understand what you're saying. Why, why is their time crunch my problem?
I'm not saying it's your problem, okay? I'm just saying that they filled out their application and that the state, I think the state's license runs out on August first for them.
I gotcha.
So here's my problem with, I do not wanna have this public meeting, this public hearing prior to a town council meeting because I have an odd feeling this public hearing is gonna go more than half an hour. Um, I think this is gonna be a well-attended and long meeting, and I'd rather not put a town council meeting past nine o'clock if that's okay with the rest. Uh, how's everybody feel about July thirtieth? Is that enough time to get it posted? No.
Right, so the sixth is the town hall. I don't wanna tie it into that one. So the next, we'd have to do it the thirteenth, right? That's what you're.
I don't, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's gonna be, I think there'll be some questions asked. Um, but on the research I've done on that, I don't, I don't see it going more than probably half hour, I guess.
Okay, um, then I would move that we have a public hearing for Nature's Miracle LLC in town council chambers on eight-thirteen, starting at six P M.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question about the process um of the public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
So like right now, we've got a um, an application in front of us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, by us moving it to a public hearing, what am I saying as a council?
That I accept?
You're not saying anything. You follow the ordinance that I listed in town code chapter one forty, one forty-sixty-seven-one, section N, subsection three, and one forty dash sixty-seven dash point three, section C, which says that you have to have a public hearing before you you have to have a public hearing before you can approve the license. So the first thing that has to happen is you have to go to a public hearing first, have that public hearing, take that input, and then have, you, you then put the license on the agenda.
Will that answer your question?
I think.
You know, all you're doing here is a formality in accordance with the ordinance. That's all this is. You're just moving it to a, a public hearing. We can't do nothing without giving them a public hearing by the ordinance.
Right, okay. And then, so if it goes to public hearing, if we move it to public hearing, we have the public hearing, that goes to the council to approve the application.
Correct. Agree or deny the application, correct.
And if approved, what? They can move on, just be fine. They're just off and going, or do they have a next step?
No, that's it. They just, they get their license signed by Mallory and then they're all set.
So, so that, that's where I'm getting at. I, sorry, I have a hang on, is because that um is, that if, if it gets to approval, then it's, then it's, they're up, they just do whatever. Um, but at what point can we get the questions answered that it's in the right district, that it's in the, that it's following table A, that all these different things? When, at what point does that happen?
When that, that should be, that'll be, so, so you have the license in front of you.
Yeah.
So you'll have the public hearing to hear from the public. And then when you get done that, it's an agenda item. When it comes up in agenda item, that's the council's discussion. That's when the council does their work on the license. That's when you and the councillor and a municipal official would discuss with the other municipal officials, whether it's in the right district, whether you think it meets the code charter, whether it meets the ordinance, that's your time. So you hear from the public first, then it's not the time for the public to speak. It's time for the council on an agenda. I simply do the council's work. So it's during that item agenda that you have that public discussion amongst yourselves on all the items on that agenda. Then based on that, you have a couple options, right? You can approve it, you can deny it, or you can pay it and ask for more information. Does that make sense? Someone? Yeah, okay, well, where am I missing? What it, what is it that, that you need further clearance on? So you hear from the public in a public hearing. That's how you guys set the ordinance up. We hear from the public, get a public hearing. The public weighs in, so you can take their feedback. And then, then it's, it's back on the council agenda, an agenda item, just like we do a license or other things after a public hearing. Lots of times it'll be, it'll show up next on an agenda item. And then that's the time when the council has their discussion about this. And you talk and you say, okay, is this, does this go to, does this meet ordinance one, one uh, one forty dash sixty-seven-one. I, I'm, I'm missing this piece. I, I don't see this piece of information. This is what I'm looking for. Is this in there? That's the time when the council has the vision.
I guess, um, I feel like I'm probably jumping too far. That's where my, my concerns are. I don't want to, I, I look beyond my, my, when I look at this, I feel like I'm being, as a councillor, to so as a license, um, cannot be tran- is not transferable between people. And a license is uh spot-specific, right?
Correct.
Um, so to me, I believe that I'm being asked to, um, I'm being asked to put forward for public conversation and time spent by the town council to a, um, something that is not okay to be doing. Um, based on.
That's, that's not a conversation for tonight. That's not here. You're way ahead of yourself.
That's why I love that.
That's not how we wrote the ordinance. US councils didn't write the ordinance that way. That's not how you do council business. So you, you, you specifically have to do it exactly as the ordinance is written. So you better have that public hearing. And then if you think there are pieces missing, the attendees have to be here. They have a right to be here in public session, and you hold that in public and you have that discussion. You can't, shouldn't discuss it without this is just a move of a public hearing. That's all this was tonight, to have the, to open them and have the discussion.
Yeah.
To follow the process through. So the reason we're doing this is because you passed an ordinance in twenty twenty-three that all retail or, uh, retail marijuana stores and medical marijuana caregivers had to have a medical license from the town itself grow. So you passed that ordinance in twenty twenty-three. So now it's coming to life in twenty twenty-four. That's exactly, so I'm following exactly what the ordinance tells us to do. It tells us that I have to approach the council once I have a completed application approved by legal, which I got it, which I talked legal, I get that approved. He's paid for his application fees, considered brand-new, because this is the first time we're doing this, and everybody else will do the same. Then they will submit it. He submitted it to me. Once I went through and looked at it, right, wrong, or indifferent, I have to move it to the council, you vote, so you can move it in the next step of the process, which is to approve the public hearing, and then get it to your shelf, your desk, to have the discussion on what you think, whether it's there or not there, whether it's all there, whether there's pieces missing, one more information. Uh, do you wanna know the color of the rooms, whatever? But that's the process to get it to you. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Is there anything else that? Um, so in one forty-sixty-seven-three, under a section, section C licensing authority, it says all medical caregiver, registered caregiver license applications, whether new or renewal, shall be reviewed by the town planner. We didn't have one, so I did it with legal, and she'll be approved by the town council after a public hearing. The application should be made or ready to the town planner, which we did. Jenny, fill that in. Um, by the section of town clerk, she'll get notice, any public hearing held by the town council by publication, da-da-da-da-da. So that's where.
Good?
Thanks.
Great. Excellent. Melissa, the other, I'm next to you.
Yeah.
Okay, hearing no more discussion. We have the motion in a second on the table for a public hearing um for eight thirteen, six P M here. Um, we'll go to a vote. Uh, Melissa?
Yes.
Jeff?
Eight thirteen is our next.
Yeah.
It's a regular meeting.
That's the regular meeting. Eight-six is the public hearing. Okay.
Um, yes.
Vote yes also. Motion passes three-zero. Moving on to the dangerous building, that I'm sure everybody in South Park drives around here to see. Would you like to discuss that, Tim, or?
Sure, give me a second to get there.
Not a problem, eh?
So the property at one nineteen Main Street, uh, which is actually located in the first building on our island Soul Street. It's owned by uh Mister George Badet, and I think George is here. Is that you, George? Hey, George, how you doing?
Fine, thank you.
Okay, so um, that building collapsed when, George, late spring?
Uh, yes, the last heavy wet snow.
Okay. So um, we attempted to contact George and we received several complaints of the building being collapsed. Uh, when women's looked at it, it is considered dangerous. It's blocked upon itself in debris. Uh, it's not secured. So uh, code enforcement on several occasions talked to George about removing the building. George, I think it had somebody coming to get it uh, or to tear it down. We keep getting complaints on that building. So at this particular point, uh, I asked Jenny today to go talk to George again, one final time before presenting this, and you see the picture. Um, I think George has tried to get the building down, um, and he can't. So under state statute standards, a dangerous building condition. We don't have an ordinance, so it comes under state statute. How this would work is, tonight I would need the town council in order to move this forward, would start uh with just a motion to start the removal process of the town to vote. Um, what I would do is we would have to then legally serve George, have him attend to a summon, be summoned to the town council. You would give George a hearing to decide whether or not we wanna remove the building and charge him for the cost. Um, or he can have the option to remove it himself. It, it would be your choice, but um, the start of the process would be that. Uh, I did not ask this, if I had to attend tonight. This is only just a you, you know, for you folks to make that decision. It's early. George is here. If you wanna hear from George, you certainly, you know, are welcome to. Um, it's not our intent to, to step on George's toes, so to speak, but we've got numerous complaints from people downtown about this building being dangerous. And just there.
Thank you, um. George, would you like to speak on this?
I am George Badet. I am a current lawful owner of one nineteen Main Street. I accept responsibility for the building. Uh, I realize the progress I'm making is slow, you know, and I can't just walk up to that building and start tearing it down. It's, it's over way over a hundred years old. It had a lot of accumulation in it. When I purchased it, I, I've accumulated a lot of materials inside and outside during the fifty-plus years I've owned it. But I've been working at it, even in this torrid heat, and believe me, the mosquitoes, it's been awful. Uh, I did uh speak with Bill Toby, a local contractor. Uh, he, I expect he expect to take it down. I expected myself that he will take it down, and uh uh, he has a couple of different pieces of equipment he said he could bring, a smaller and a larger machine. Um, if he were to bring the smaller one, because his larger one's torn, tied up, I would have to, I had to clear all uh, the left side and the right side and the front, so that he could get his machine close enough to do the work. I've done that. Uh, on the right side, I have to take down a few small trees, and I expect to be ready for him by maybe noon time tomorrow. Uh, I've been trying to contact him. It's hard to reach him by cell phone. I've called him more than nine times today only, and uh, I, I couldn't get through to him, but uh, tomorrow I'll try again, and I'll try until I do reach him. He's, sometimes he answers the phone after hours. And, but he has looked at it. We've talked about it. Uh, I want him to bring the larger machine, so we can do a faster job of it. But uh, as I, as it stands right now, I want it down, the neighbors want it down, it looks terrible, you people want it down. Um, I've done, I've, I've been inside of it, uh, and on top of it, uh, any number, hundred times.
Don't do that, George. I don't wanna come rough to you. We appreciate that.
Well, but, but, I mean, for safety's sake, uh, you know, it's down as low as it's gonna go. It's collapsed upon whatever's inside. It can't go down any lower. Uh, so I, you know, I'm, 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 I'm accustomed to that kind of work. It's, it's safe for me to be on it and in it. But I've taken out of it now, all that I can reach, uh, from the top and from the inside. Uh, I'm ready now for Bill to come. And that's where we stand at the moment. Uh, whatever you decide, I don't know that I can go any faster. I, 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 I do have to wait my turn with the contractor when his machines are available. And we, we did plan to bring in dumpsters and just, I hopefully bring in his larger machine, I hope, just grab it quickly and fill up the dumpsters and be done with it. It's I, I'll have a lot of handwork to do after he leaves, but that's where we stand at the moment. I don't know if I can go any faster.
Mister Chairman, the name?
Sure. So I didn't have that information. That's what, we've been having a hard time to find George and get this information. And that's what I needed to get. I just needed something to get to the public. Now, hearing George say that and, and believing that he's giving us a good faith attempt, my recommendation would be for the town to take no action at this time, just let him continue and.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that, trusting Mister Goddett in his word. He's been here for a long time. To set the public at ease a little bit. I'd like to table this until the next meeting, until the thirteenth. That, that gives Mister Goddett two or three weeks to get hold of Mister Toby, who is um, extremely hard to get hold of sometimes. It was easier when I could walk across the street and see him. Uh, but I would, I would like to just table this, so we can discuss it in three weeks, in two weeks. That way um, the, anybody else calls you with complaints, you can let them know that George Kane stood the force. We're gonna discuss it again in two weeks. If he's making progress, then I have no issue making it go. If he's not making progress, maybe we need down. But I don't wanna put any undue stress on Mister Goddett, more than he already has.
That's all enough.
So, yes. So uh, that being said, I make a motion to table number three, dangerous building, until eight-thirteen to discuss it further then. Say it. Any further discussion?
I feel like we're on a roll tabling agenda items lately, and I feel like we're starting to backlog ourselves with, uh, old business.
We are.
And it's kind of frustrating after listening to Mr. Goddett, thank you for your presentation, and. If only we would have gotten that information sooner, as Tim had said, if we wouldn't be here to this, but. In the construction industry myself, I know how difficult it is to get a hold of a kind of construction company, and, um. I would prefer that. We take no action and maybe discuss a deadline, give the public a, okay, we're not gonna take any action, but. Maybe work something out with Mr. Goddett of you, we'll leave this up to you to take care of. But, but we gotta try to work a timeline out, and then, then the public will be reassured that it is in the process. I mean, they've. I understand the hazard of it, and I understand that there is some dangerous materials. Um, but people also have to be empathetic that this gentleman lost a building. Whether it was a shed, a barn, a house, and I just. Kind of concerned about the lack of empathy lately.
All right. So the motion on the table presently is to table it. Um, any further conversation? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. And go from there. Jeff?
Yeah.
Melissa?
No.
I vote yes, it is not the man, and yeah, unanimous, it goes away. Based on Robert's rules. Thank you, Mr. Goddett.
Thank you.
Continue on, we appreciate you coming in.
Well, thank you very much, thank you too.
The town can help, please reach out to Tim, he will be more than willing to do whatever we need to do to help.
I am surprised that, uh, you're having difficulty reaching me, uh, because I've been readily available.
Well, I'll come, well, I'll come find you next time, now, I'll come find you next time, now I know where you are, I'll just, I'll just come find you.
Thank you.
The guy on the tractor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goddett.
Mr. Vice Chair. Question or, uh, clarity? So the motion on the table was to table.
Yep.
Uh, that failed.
Correct. Motion goes away.
That motion goes away. This motion is still up for, up for debate.
What motion?
Correct.
The motion, the motion was to table. Correct, right, yeah, but that takes care of this motion. We motioned to table it, there's no further action.
I feel like, I think there's another act that needs to happen. There's another act that needs to happen, because we, we can research that, but I do believe the Robert's rules.
And the motion dies.
Right, you're correct, you're hundred percent, but the motion, the motion was to table.
Okay.
So that would have pushed it down the road, so that thing, not this motion.
You're accurate, sorry, yes, the article still stands. Yes, you're right, correct. So new business number four still stands. I'll entertain a motion on new business number four.
Wait, what? New business number three?
Yeah, that too. I scratched it out, sorry, new business number three.
Can I ask a question for clarity? Ahead of making a motion, uh, a motion?
Sure.
So. I'm not familiar with the, the process that Tim had brought up on this piece, right, that. What is the process, let, let's say that we, um, approved. Whatever the next step is, as, as a, to the, to the writing on here, right? If we approved it, what is that next step that the town would take?
Okay, well, so there's now two parts to this. So the first part is, I'll answer your question. The process would be that you would have to vote to approve this, and I would contact legal, legal has to draft a legal summons, give it to the York County Sheriff. Mr. Goddett, we serve that summons to appear in front of the town council at a set time and date, of which you, you would choose a hearing, he gets to have a hearing. And at that hearing, he would come and either tell you that he's trying to, you know, tear down the building, or that he can't do anything with the building. Or that he needs help with the building, or whatever, and then at that hearing, you guys, you, you, he has the right as a citizen to be heard. Then from there, you guys could decide to do nothing, to do something, to make a motion to remove the building, and. The cop, the bat charge to his, to him, um, and, and all that stuff. That's, that answers your question. On the fact that Mr. Gladette stood here tonight. And told us that he's trying to take the building down, and he's got a plan to go forward. The council would have no really legal action at this point, a legal place. Other than to potentially say, okay, we'll monitor the situation, make sure you do this. You, you, court systems are very. Prominent about making sure that towns and communities don't overstep their boundaries of citizens. So they're very, you know, so if he, if he's trying to get that done, and that part of it. My, which we didn't have, you know, I would say at this point, you table it, and definitely to check back with him, or. Have him come back for a review date, or do something, but as long as he's making an effort to clear this. I really don't have. I, I, I would not have put this in front of you had I had this meeting with Mr. Gladett. He's making an honest attempt, I think, and I agree with, uh, Chairman, uh, James, you know. I think you better give him an opportunity to try to get this, you know, whatever that is, you can ask him to come back at a later date. And set that date, you know, September, or, or whatever, say, we'll give you this amount of time, or. But even if he, even if he, unless he said tonight, you know. I can't do this, and I'm not gonna do it, so you do whatever you're gonna do. But at this point, he's trying to make an honest effort, I think, to try to get the move.
So if we table it without a date, guys?
They, they were a lot of dated guys.
So we, if we table it with a date, we're kicking the can down the road, which is what Councilor Costello just voted against. So, with that being said, George stood in front of us and told us he's gonna take care of it, I'm gonna take the man in his word, I will make a motion. That we take no further action on new business number three, dangerous building.
Second.
Any discussion on that, like our?
No, I turned the conference, that are on.
I think, the only thing I would say, I, I agree with, uh, what was set up here by the councils, and I appreciate. Uh, you sir coming in, and I, I, I just, my person, personally, what I'm feeling is. I just wanna make sure that the conversation keeps going, and however, whatever help is needed or whatnot, that that conversation's. Going on, happening, that's all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
To answer Councilman Manahan's question, so from here, what happens, that it'll get hit back over the code. So code, now code enforcement will continue to follow the progress, and if within thirty days. There's no progress, or sixty days, we can, we can reactivate this, and I can bring it back to the council, bring it back to the force, so. We'll monitor, but I take George for his word, I don't think George came here just to. Just waste our time, um, you know, and I think he's made a good faith effort, I just had a lot of complaints from people, tell them, call them. So I had to take some action to show that the town and the council was responsive for the people's needs out there as well. All right, hearing no further discussion, the motion on the table, and the second was to take no further action on dangerous building. Number, new business number three, Melissa?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes also. Motion passes, no further action. Moving on to new business number four, the recreation grant. Looks like the town received a recreation grant for our six thousand dollars for Vicky and Bruce Whitney. To be used for recreation and youth programs. I will move to accept the grant, six thousand dollars from Vicky and Bruce Whitney, thank them. Uh, for their generous donation to the town, uh, and it's to be used for youth and recreation programs.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, any discussion? Um, I do have one question, of who will control disbursement of the grant? The recreation department, or will that come before us, like? Other grants?
It would be used for recreation, but you prefer for us to bring it forward.
Yeah, I, just asking, in case I get asked, is, is, is it just gonna be one of the recreation fund, or that's all?
They did meet with Nikki, um, Recreation Director, and she felt the donation great need for. Um, recreation in general.
All good? Excellent, thank you.
Welcome.
It's, it was. Identified for the youth recreation program, that's where, that's where it's going.
I, I understood, I just, if, there's always gonna be a question when there's money floating around for. Grants, and I just wanted to make sure that the public understands there is a plan and it's being dispersed properly, that's all.
Absolutely.
Trying to answer questions before they get posed. Um, any further questions? Hearing done, go to a vote, yeah.
This is accepted, thank you.
Yes.
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Voting yes, we did have a second on that, right? I, I apologize, the heat's got to me over the last week. All right, moving on to new business number five. Getting an interview for a reinforced, possible board member.
We don't have spare time.
Okay. We gotta sign up for this. Um, so we have, we have an application from Alexander Gagman for receipt on the recreation committee. Council have any? Dates in mind? I would, I hate.
We have, so I'm on the sixth.
But this is a public hearing, the first meeting would be eight thirteen, but we have the public hearing on marijuana license on eight thirteen and six. So you could either do it before that, if everybody could be here, and get it out of the way. Everybody have a problem, five forty five?
Should we table this? Just kidding. Um, I, I can make it for five forty five.
All right, we will. I move that we set up an interview for eight thirteen and five forty five P M. In the back room on the third floor right here. Not sure what you call that.
Second.
And a motion and a second, any conversation? Beautiful, Jeff?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Vote yes also, motion passes three zero. Thank you, Alexander, for volunteering for the committee, there are still many other positions open, so the townspeople that want to belong. Because they lived here and wanna complain, please come out and fill up our committees. All right, moving on to business number six, Happy Valley LLC liquor license renewal.
Motion to approve the liquor license renewal for Happy Valley LLC, where there has been no issues reported.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any conversation? Hearing done, Melissa?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
I vote yes also, motion passes three zero. Moving from that, we have the Happy Valley LLC special amusement permit. And prior to. Making the motion, I just wanna set the reminder of. We have made it past practice that we do not hold public hearings for these special amusement permits, so. Okay, to that, I move that we vote to approve the special amusement permit for Happy Valley LLC.
Second.
Motion in a second, any conversation? Hearing done, Melissa?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
I vote yes also, motion passes three zero.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir, I, yes, ma'am.
I just wanna clarify, um, where you say that public hearing is not needed anymore, shall I remove that last clause on the special amusement permit application?
That would have to be a council motion, though, yeah?
Let me, let's wait till we.
I'd have to put that on as an agenda item and just talk about it. Well, I'm just going on past precedent, but that's a great thought, so we don't have to keep that along.
I was just looking at the word shall, so I just wanna.
Yeah. Put that on a note, so we remember, please. Jeff, you're up. So I don't wanna hold everybody up, um, so before we get started, I'd, I'd like to, um. Reintroduce to the council, I'm, I'm sure everybody knows him, um, Paul Truwalker. Paul is a lifelong town resident, or for many years, I guess. Uh, Paul was one of our first original planners, Paul has since retired, headed after thirty years director of S and P D C. Um, Paul came and talked with me, that he was getting ready to retire, and opted to work as a contract planner for the town, um. For about ten hours a week to help us out, uh, which is fantastic, because Paul knows the ordinances, where he wrote most of them. Um, we're getting ready to redo them, it will save us a bunch of time, so I've contracted with Paul, the, um. To work ten hours a week with us as a contract planner, um, he'll be helping us out, he, he'll be working specifically on. Comp plan, the, um. Land use ordinance refresh. Renewal, and be working, doing some, some work with the downtown revitalization plan. Um, he also knows where all the grand money is, which is a plus for us. Well, I'm excited to have Paul come on, he's also gonna help guide Jenny and, uh. The planning board on planning issues when he can, uh, he's not primary planner, we're trying to hire that position with economic development. All the way. So, um, Paul's here tonight, and I'd like to thank Paul for coming on board, and just. Paul, I just wanna say a few things, we'd love to hear from you, and Paul signed it today, and, um, we're very excited to have him back and have him on board. It goes full circle, comes around, and.
Boy, really? Yeah, I keep saying I'll fix all the mistakes I made thirty years ago, um. But in any case, uh, glad to be here, um, there's a lot going on, uh, which you, you guys all know, um. A lot of plans and, and projects, and, um, I'm, I'm, I'm just hoping to be able to work with Tim. And try to get some of those across the finish line, starting with probably the downtown plan, um, I know the new planner will probably come in and do a lot of that. At some point, uh, the comp plan's probably gonna be ready to go in another month or so. Um, and hopefully it'll get approved by the state and by, uh, uh, you folks, and then we need to implement it. Um, and then there's obviously the downtown traffic, uh, situation and the lights. Uh, there's a host of other projects going on, the Eastern Trail is coming up with a feasibility study with a, a, a trail through South Berwick. Or a, a, a proposed, you know, location for that trail, so there's a whole bunch of things going on, which I, uh, really hope to be able to help with. And, uh. Yeah, I mean, hopefully I can do it in ten hours a week, um, but, uh, so much for retirement, I guess. Um, I'll, uh, I'll. Be around, just, uh, I live out on Bell Marsh Road, stop anytime you want, so, thanks.
Thank you, Paul, uh, the community is extremely lucky and grateful to have you. And since you drive by my house anyways, and retirement wasn't good enough for you, I got projects right on the hook, so swing in, I got some grass cutting you could do.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you're bored, I got some work for you, but thank you again, we are extremely lucky to have you.
Right.
So the highway, uh, we, the, the down end, just one on the highway, paving blocks on Swan Road on seven twenty three. Replacing culverts on Great Hill Road, five eighty five, Remedy Bridge Road, and seventy Bell Marsh Road. Fixing irrigation system near the Soldier's Monument, we don't know if somebody. We say now somebody put a sign, posted a homemade sign, pounded it in the ground, and pounded, pounded through the piping. Trying to get that fixed, um, public works gonna be painting crosswalks with. Um, yellow crossbars for more visibility and awareness, I've had clear floor complaints with people. Complaining about, uh, almost getting hit in the crosswalk, so we're gonna try. Try to make, try to make them more visible, but again. Uh, the new true dump rocks that we ordered are on E C Fairfield, waiting for their dumb boys and fog here. We're hoping to have them to live.
We're hoping to have them delivered in September, and they're doing weed control this week on the sidewalks and on all the streets. Uh, Police Department had four arrests, seven accidents, sixty-eight traffic stops. Um, National Night Out's gonna be held in South Berwick for the first time on August sixth, five thirty to eight. Gonna be at the Shoot Down Playground field, uh, National Night Out, an annual community building campaigns to promote police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. Brighter Bottom had seventeen calls in the last two weeks, two hundred and fifty-four yet to date. Uh, next week, Chief and Lieutenant Brian Roman will be traveling to pass manufacturing in Appson, Wisconsin, but just paid preconstruction and approval meetings for the new engine one that we wanted to take in two years to get. After the meeting next week, production of the new tropical site will take approximately five, six months complete. Hopefully be delivered sometime in late spring next year. Code enforcement had seven building permits, one plumbing permit went violation. And Seacoast Christian School Gym is scheduled to come down the second week of August. Under planning, major home occupation, automotive service was denied, major site plan amendments, several states have been denied. Unitel Shoreland zoning permit was approved. Site plan amendment to Seacoast Christian School Gym is set for a public hearing on August seventh at thirty P M. And as I said, Paul's come on as the town's contract planner and help with special projects.
At the library tomorrow, wildlife wildlife encounters will be there for tiny creatures at three o'clock. The last, this is the last two weeks for summer reading. Things are starting to wind down. They've had a lot of participants, and the new library page is working out very well. Recreation, summer camp has been great. The kids chewed the sago last week, and this week they're headed to Stone Zoo. And the last day of camp will be August first. Makes me sad. They just have a ticket program with the Partners, uh, Main Recreation and Parks Association. They have tickets for Splash Town, Front Town, Aquaba. Again, they have been very popular. It was nice to see people taking advantage of this opportunity, and they do plan to offer this again next year. The seniors, the visiting nurses association, held a discussion on depression in seniors last Wednesday, which there was about forty people in attendance. The seniors enjoyed a trip to Inner Lakes Theater on Thursday. They saw Million Dollar Quartet. They enjoyed that show. The next luncheon they have is next Wednesday on the thirty-first, and we'll be having a summer barbecue. In assessing, the updated value for April first, twenty twenty-four was finalized yesterday. Values continue to climb from April twenty twenty-two to April twenty twenty-three, and even continues to grow onto twenty-three to twenty-four. Most properties increased in a value of six to eighteen percent with an estimated average increase to values due to the market of fourteen point two percent. If a property increased more than this range, it is likely that there was a, either a data correction or they had primitive work, that they had some additions in their home. Overall growth in properties increased average together at seventeen point five percent. The assessing office will be closed next week, the week of July twenty-fourth, I'm sorry, twenty-ninth, for staff training at the state's annual property tax school. The assessor will be available by email if there's anything urgent, um, from the public. The town clerk, as Tyan said earlier, has nomination papers that will be available on Monday. There's one spot for the town council, one spot for the school board. The transfer station, um, Jeff will be out of work for a little while, so Paige in the office will be taking over some of his duties. Economic development had, we've had an inquiry again about the downtown facade program, so I expect to see a new application coming in soon. We had two interviews scheduled for Thursday for the economic development slash planner position. Next Wednesday, uh, I'm sorry, next downtown revitalization meeting will be on August third, here in, up here on the third floor at six o'clock. In my area, I had twelve business meetings, twenty-five staff meetings. I had a surprise meeting prayers, which is the main public employees retirement system pension program. We had a surprise audit of the first quarter of this calendar year. Everything went fine. They asked for a lot of information in a very short amount of time, uh, but that all went very well. Jay and I are working together to finish our FEMA storm for January, which was the flooding storm on Hoover Sands. That's all been, uh, finished now. We're getting all the invoices to them and finalizing that. We're meeting with him on Thursday morning. Continue to work on your end. Reconciliations, looking at accounts, doing analysis. The tax club applications were sent out last week. And the new low rate calculations will be brought to the town council on August thirteenth. Tim and I have started working on that. As I mentioned, Brenna just finished her numbers last night at nine thirty. She saved it. Um, just as a reminder, five eighty Emery's Bridge Road will be closed on Thursday morning from seven to noon for COVID replacement.
We held our quarterly safety meeting. No issues to report. Had a meeting with Seacoast Christian Academy. They have approached the town about time, or in town, the new gym, including using a parking lot, downtown businesses and apartments, as well as offering access to use the gym once it gets built, and so we turned that around and, um, had them meet with Nikki, and they've worked out, they're working on some potential rock programs, uh, indoor cut the wall and some other stuff. I can't remember what the other stuff was. Uh, whether, you know, what they might have that we don't have the ability to do right now. So that's very gracious of them, I think, to have come forward and said, here's the plan. But we wanna be more community friendly. We want people to know that Seacoast Christian Academy is part of help the town of South Berwick, you know, where we're here to share our facilities, and so we had a meeting with them and did that. Um, had a meeting with two meetings with the citizens in reference to complaints of businesses in our three zone. Um, and obviously, um, we've hired Paul and what he's gonna do in his work. Uh, he'll also be working as the CATS area representative for us, the transportation system, and working on grants. Um, so I met with the citizens from Denitt Road came in and petitioned the town to us to take over Denitt Road. And Denitt Road is a, not a road, it's a path. And so in following that, I just wanna briefly so you know the the process. So we started to research it. So on August twenty-fourth, nineteen seventy-six, the town council voted unanimously to make that, to retain public easements for recreational use of public safety. In order for them, for us to take it to you where it's not in a subdivision, to become a public road, they would have to bring it up to today's standards and have it paid before you could do that. That'd be millions of dollars, and obviously, eight or nine homeowners don't have that money. So we're doing legal research with the attorney, which is one of my notes. The attorney said, we're, the town at the time in nineteen seventy-six, not only voted for that, but all the other roads that they did away with, um, including Benon Road, the old York War, York Woods Road, Clacks Lane, which was Goodloom's Lord's Lane Extension. So all of these and there's a bunch more. They made them by this vote. The town retained public easements for recreational use of public safety. So for years, the town manager had told these people that we can't do anything because it's not a road and it's on private property. You can't use taxpayer money on private property. So I have had a different, a little bit of a different experience, so I called the attorney for clarification, and this is what I found out. Because it is, you decided, the council decided to make it a public easement. We do have the authority to do whatever we want on that road, but we do not have public obligation to do that like we do publicly, where we have to maintain it for following and so. So ultimately, in the end, we settled on that we would help them if they bought all the fill in the road, we'll bring it. And they have grown that. They just think that's the best thing since life been. So. So this is Dennis off of Witch Drive. No, this is Dennis off.
Bennett and Dennis.
Right, right. Which one? Bennett is off of Witch Drive. Okay. This is Dennis off of, this would be off of Great, uh, by the Great Works River. Um, our section starts. Let's see.
And.
We're maxing at the inside Boyd's Corner Road.
Okay.
It it the entrance is like right before Riverside Bar Stand, off of before.
Yeah.
So.
Got one of the weird, we take that sharp turn.
So what's the difference between us doing this to all of them and us doing this to just this one, was the petition of the citizens? That's the difference. So we don't have to do anything, and you can pass a rule that says we're not gonna do anything with any of these. That's really gutting. But at this particular point, what the attorney referenced was, because it says that we retained an easement for public easement for recreational use of public safety, we kind of have an onus to make sure that the adults and the private are to get down that road and get the people.
Is that gonna go all the way out to the other end?
No, no. It's just, it's only, Jay measured it. It's just a quarter of a mile. It's it's just a, it's, so it's from the bridge to the swamp, and we went down there the other day. It's just.
Right by the power line.
The whole power line. Okay. How, so it stops like, the the, from where we're at, the power lines are probably another two, three hundred yards in.
Okay.
So stop right at the last touch. So they're gonna pay for, so, you know, I asked the attorney, and he said, well, you can't really charge them because it's public easement. So he said, you can't really ask for, you can't, you can't charge them because we have no way to, to give the money if you don't pay. He said, so technically what you could do is you could ask for donation. So we're asking them to buy the fill and get the fill on the road, or we'll get the fill on the road, then we'll bring it. And that'll make it a lot better. So if we do that twice a year, that's, that's fair. We're helping us citizens. It's only gonna cost us, it's gonna cost them about eight hundred dollars for the fill. And we'll just, Jay will run a grade over it and grade it out, and we're gonna be a good deal. And we're helping the citizens who petition the town.
Excellent.
They they seem very happy with that. So that's peace. I wanted to make sure you guys, you don't try.
You know, yes, just, um, for ongoing councils and stuff like that, how is this documented? Uh, so that we under that councils in the future won't run into what we run into where we're like, oh, this deal was made. So you just said that they, that we'll be doing this two times a year forever?
Well, I mean, we're just gonna grade it in the spring and the fall, so I'm gonna write them a letter, and there'll be, it'll be a letter from the manager's notes. It'll be and the manager's saying that, I'll give them a copy of it. We'll retain a copy of it. I'll sign it. You know, and and if the road needs, what I'm gonna say, if the road needs anything more than grading, it needs more fill, they'll buy the fill. For certain residents, they'll be responsible for the fill. I can, we can pretty much say anything to that, you know, thank you. But they'll, they'll buy the fill, and we just, it's just a matter of driving a grader for public works to that road, driving up and down the road a couple of times. So I'm just gonna draft, if we draft it in the letter, it'll be retained to them in a copy of it, and in my manager's notes that I have all my stuff, so. Don keeps that in a notebook that is kept in her office, so anytime I do a memo or a letter or something, it's all in ten dollar binder in that office, so all you have to do is go back and look what Tim, Tom, Tim Keller did.
Sure. So another, another town manager or road commissioner will be able to look back at that.
Correct.
Ah, yes.
Yeah.
You're not just.
Really, I've attached, I'm attaching all the notes to it, so they can see exactly, so they don't have to call the attorney anymore and answer the same questions I did. And and so the other part of that is, again, instead of just saying, no, get away from us, we're not doing anything because it's a private road, we can't have you. Well, we helped them, and they're very, I think they're very, you know, I, what's the kid's name that follows us? Busha?
Jordan.
Jordan. Thank you, Busha.
And that's it.
They were very happy. The the town at least took the time to answer their questions. And I, and I find, so I find that's what we do a lot here, and we go on, well, that's what we always said. Well, that may not be the right, and turns out, again, here's the passage that thank you to Ty in for digging this out of the notes. And then able to get minutes from seventy-six. Now we have, now we know people don't vote, they'll have all the information. It's in, everything I do is in a notebook that Dawn keeps for. For Jen, she'll still be here. I'll be going, Dawn, but Jen will still be here.
We have an electronic paper.
Yeah, we had it electronic.
Thank you.
Um, so that was, that was the citizens of private road. That was a whole couple of weeks prior. Uh, the Great Works Regional Land Trust contacted us. They said, they have an agreement, reroute two sections of Town Forest Track, uh, Recreation Track Trail. I think we sent this to them anyway, Diane, right?
Yeah.
If all they're gonna do is take the purple trail and reroute it through red boxes. Well.
It is.
And, uh, and then I met with Tim Smith, and Jen met with Tim Smith to develop the process. We utilized the Great Works Land Trust and starting the food chip work, the two boxes of landing purchase and how to access that money through you. So what we did is we followed basically the purchasing policy, gave that to them in writing and said that they need to present it to you ahead of time with quote, at least three quotes if they could get them, if not, explain why, what you're gonna do with the money, try to keep the expenditures into bigger expenses, and they were fine with that. And the map is they're just gonna move the purple trails, we're gonna go up through the red blocks on each side.
All right. Can you repeat that, what you were just saying before? You were just gave some explanation, because my, my question is about how currently in all of the trails, like that trail is a hundred percent on, um, Town Forest, South Berwick.
They, 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 so this is, they, they signed a land use agreement to reroute two sections of the Town Forest Track Recreation Trail, Town Forest on the Great Works Land Trust, the Roche Memorial, the Roche's Memorial Forest with the Great Works Regional Land Trust.
Okay, so they, so they, they kind of captured that in an agreement saying.
They, they wrote it right in a land use agreement.
I got you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry.
No, that's fine. And then the last part was, um, so I met with Tim Smith, because we, he wants to start his project, but he didn't know how to access the money, so we gave him kind of a rig procedure, which merits our purchasing policy to kind of follow. And we just told him, we didn't want you, him coming to you for, you know, twenty dollars, so try to move the stuff into big, big numbers, but to get, try to get three prices like we do with our budgets, with all our stuff. I mean, if he couldn't get that, that three prices to explain to you why not, and then who they're picking for vendor and why, present that to you, and then so I feel that's sufficient unless you'd like something different.
No, I appreciate the.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I appreciate the procedure. And so hopefully they'll be following.
Won't take up a lot of your time, but they'll be following it properly. That's all I have. Anything else?
Right now.
That's all I have. That's Jim.
All right. Thank you for that. We'll move on to council member comments. We need Melissa.
Uh, two weeks ago, Aiden Ricks McElhany won a gold medal in record Roman wrestling, as well as being named tournament's most outstanding wrestler at the under twenty fan and championships in line of group. Um, this victory earned him a place on the United States Wrestling Team for the under twenty championships in Spain this September. Why am I sharing this information, you ask? Uh, because he's from South Berwick. And ironically, speaking of full circle with Paul and S M P D, um, and coming back to us, um, Aiden actually left Marshford High School his sophomore year and moved out to Colorado to train with Deanna Ricks. Who, Mr. James, is, who is Deanna Ricks?
Uh, they trying to think of how we can put it.
A wrestling goddess from South Berwick?
Yes, she is a, uh, she is actually an incredible wrestler. I had the privilege of pretty much following her from the time she was this big on wrestling mat all the way through. She wrestled at the same time as my son, um, absolutely incredible. She was on the USA team. She tried up the Olympics a couple of times. Um, she's just an incredible individual, along with a talented athlete. She was fantastic to watch a little blonde go out there and beat up all the boys. It was fantastic. Um, she is, again, just unbelievable. Thought it's, it's great to hear that that's going. She's still doing what she loved to do. Uh, her dad is still here coaching for the high school. Um, he started the B W program, and again, his community is yeah, the Ricks is now off the community, so it's great to see her still out there.
So, and the other reason I wanted to bring this to the community's attention, because just like we voted for Julia Gonya for our American Idol, um, gave her all of her votes, Aiden also needs a little bit of help just with support. And anybody that can follow him at Aiden Ricks, uh, A Y D I N R I X, you just have to follow him. That earns him endorsements and sponsorships to help pay for, um, his trips around the world, um, as he makes his way to hopefully the twenty twenty-eight Olympics in Los Angeles. Makes his way to hopefully the twenty twenty-eight Olympics in Los Angeles.
Okay.
And congratulations to the twelve under and eight under youth baseball teams in our community, I know they both went to regional. Regional tournaments in Connecticut and I'm still haven't heard back of how they're doing down there. That's it.
Could you, um, just repeat so I can get currently where we all, I need a.
A Y D I N or Y N? Yeah, I'm sorry, on Instagram, it's at. A Y D I N R I X. Thank you.
Jeff?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Uh, I've done enough damage for tonight myself, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And a beautiful, thank you all. Valerie will hopefully be back for the next meeting.
This is a recording.